The Chair will call to order tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education. It's April 12, 2022. Roll call please.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia. Ms. Stecadi.
Here.
Mr. Marin.
Here.
Mr. Avia.
Here.
Ms. Hoover.
Here.
Ms. Conover.
Here.
Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is closed session. The Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues, student discipline, and sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Stecadi.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Closed.
Has returned from closed session. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 15th, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented. So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the March 15th, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented. So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. I'll just read some guidelines here about public comment. Public comment is a time for the community to address the board with comments and questions. Each community member has five minutes. Once you've been notified, your time is up. Please kindly step away from the podium. Public comment will be for 30 minutes with no more than each subject lasting 20 minutes. Please understand this is not an engagement time. The board will consider your comments in its decisions. For those comments or questions requiring follow-up, the board president or superintendent will follow up. And we do have a public comment tonight from Bill Regala.
Hey, everybody. Nice to meet you again.
Hello.
Thanks for having me here. And it's nice to see smiling faces and be able to, you can see my smiling face. I feel like a lot of the times you heard me yelling and was behind a mask and let you know. Just wanted to sort of talk through grade level centers, strategic plan. And I had a good conversation with President Coyle, Superintendent Carey on Thursday to discuss some of the grade level centers and things that we talked through. And wanted to, first of all, say thank you to both of them for having that conversation. Out of that conversation was a note that letting the whole community know about the decision and recognizing that, yes, an email was sent to current CUSD-201 families, but recognizing that maybe there needs to be another way to get that information out, whether it be paper mailing, there was things to mention about that. So I'm glad to hear that that's moving forward. The other piece was about the data that I've been consistently asking for since June of 2021, when we had the task force meeting. And Mr. Carey extended that by the end of August of this year was the intent to get those numbers. And again, thank you for that. And I think those numbers are important. And just to talk a little bit on the data, it's not like I woke up one day and decided, hey, I need all these numbers. These were the numbers that Kevin and the board had presented as part of the decision that grade level centers were going to be affected by and how do we measure them? So I'm excited that we're going to get that information. But I think it's also critically important that when we're talking to the strategic plan, that we take those into account as well. Because I know grade level center is just one component of the strategic plan. So just stating publicly for the board, for anybody on the task force, for anybody that will be part of that strategic planning, those numbers are going to be critically important so we can determine what is successful or not. So I know we've got to by the end of August to have those, but if there's strategic plan meetings happening before that, the sooner the better because it will help better inform everyone in those decision-making processes what they are. And just to be clear, those are data from numbers 2019 and before. It's not like we're asking for stuff during COVID or things that haven't been calculated yet. Not that the data's on the shelf and you can just grab it, but it's something that could be aggregated and correlated and provided to the community to help with this information. So I just wanted to state that again, first of all, thank you for engaging the community. I know it's often difficult while I'm up here talking and you guys can't engage by the nature of the board, but the fact that we are moving forward, and I think it's an opportunity for the next piece that we're doing here with the strategic plan, to ensure that we don't make the same mistakes that were made with engagement of the community and the discussions around grade level centers. I know that everyone here is coming from good faith. We want to do the best what's for the students, for the community, for everyone that's involved. But we need to show our work and not just say this is the solution. Tell me that the answer is 32, I'll believe it. I'll believe that it's 32, but if it's eight times four with common core, I feel like my third grader has to show how he got to 32. He just can't say 32. He's going to get, eh, it's a C or a B on it. He's not going to get the full A if he can't explain, oh, it's eight groups of four that got him to that 32 number. So I understand it's a complex system, but it should be, you know, education, but it should be easily digestible from people in the community of here are the decisions that we're making, here's the impact for them, and here's what we expect to happen so that we can know what the expected outcomes are or what we propose so we can determine was it effective or not. So I just wanted to take the time to just, you know, provide continuity of continuing to ask for this information. Thank you for the discussion and the expectation of when we can get that. And just wanted to say, I know the next major item as a board, as a district, is the strategic plan. Let's sort of learn from, I want to say the failure is a little bit of a harsh term, but some of the opportunities that we can learn from what happened from the grade level center interaction and make a more collaborative and sort of decisive decision with more people involved for that strategic plan. And there's a lot of overlap there. So hoping that we can continue that moving forward. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. One, personnel recommendations. Laura Lopez, Westmont High School, teaching and learning coordinator, assistant principal. Two, Dana Hayjack, Manning, long-term sub, second grade. Three, retirements. And four, resignation. The second item is approval of the DAOS representative. And the third item is the approval of additional March 2022 expenditure report.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Steckity?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Okay. Next up on the agenda are items for information and discussion, and the first one is the capital project review.
Okay, so this is to outline the major infrastructure needs throughout the district. So these are kind of the bigger projects that require like a formal bid package, a lot of planning. Schedule for this is typically, the bidding process needs to start like November, December. So kind of identifying projects early in the fall to plan for the next year is really important. Like getting it in before the holidays is very important, just out of timing and planning. So the projects outlined are roughly prioritized based on needs at each location. So as we go through it, I'll kind of explain that a little more. So this is kind of a list of all the things, just an overview. The first thing being the HVAC replacement at the junior high. Right now, that's the biggest project needed in the district. Following that is a south roof replacement, which is over the student section. We plan on doing that with the school maintenance grant that we applied for. The high school, the roofing in some specific locations is desperately in need of replacement. District-wide parking lot replacements minus the high school and Manning, everything else is pretty much at the place where we need to replace it as opposed to repairing or maintaining. The last two items on here are the high school pool and the Manning infrastructure conversation, which is more or less like a radar thing in a bigger conversation that needs to be had just to go over certain options, kind of the needs of it. It's just much bigger conversations.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for one second? Can you go ahead and introduce yourself to the board and the community?
Sorry.
No, Laura, I was just thinking the same thing.
No, I mean, I know who you are, but I want to make sure the community watching knows.
So I'm Joe Smith. I'm the director of facilities for the district. This August will be the end of my third year. So a little bit of background information about this presentation. So when I first started in the district, one of the things that Kim and I worked on was going back five years, like the immediate needs of the district, like where's the money going, where are the biggest problems, what needs the most attention first? So the first thing that we did when we assessed that was a chiller replacement at the high school, which was one of the biggest problems at the high school. Again, something that needed to be replaced as opposed to spending money on parts, fixing, repairs. The second summer I was here, we did the automation system at the high school, which again was, that's like the brains of the whole building for temperature control, heating and air conditioning. We had a problem with controllers going out by age. So when a controller would go out, we had no choice but to replace it so that we can operate the system like it needs to. So that was the second thing we did. It was a very big project. It was good to get it off the list. So now the next biggest thing is the junior high HVAC. And that takes me to the next slide. So we'll be talking about this project later with Steve and Dan, but to lay it out, so the rooftops were installed in 1999. Currently, the AC uses R22 refrigerant, which is no longer available. It's very expensive to get. The overall system is no longer reliable or energy efficient. So currently, we have no way of telling temperature in the building remotely. So in the wintertime, that poses a problem with extreme cold temperatures. In the summertime, it gives you, you know, knowledge when you're not there of what's going on. going on and certain things you can come into. The option that we would suggest to replace that would convert the building to a two-pipe system. It would also give us new domestic hot water system, which would replace our current one that is original to the building. And then we would also be adding an automation system so that we can monitor, we can schedule things, we can put things on a program. An alternate to the project is an LED lighting project, which would convert all the lighting in the student and academic area to LED lighting. We would be reducing the amount of fixtures by a third, and then obviously they're more energy efficient. Moving to the high school. So if you look at the picture of the high school, some sections of it are original to the building. So if you look at the kidney bean section, that's original along with, along with everything on the left side, like that middle portion is auditorium, which is original. The gym section is the next one to the left of that. And then to the left of that is the pool. So biggest need is the gym, is the gym. Currently, we have a lot of leaks that are in the way of sports, gym class, just makes things really difficult to deal with. The roofing over the pool, I would not suggest doing anything with that until a bigger conversation is had about the pool. Right now, that's about four different roofs and, you know, just bigger conversations need to be had before anything is done with that. The HVAC roof, which is the portion in the middle of the bean, where you can see the rooftop units on there, that was all replaced in 2005. So that is a good roof for the next couple of years. If you see on the left section of the building, at the top and the bottom, those sections are getting replaced this summer. So that is above like the fine arts department, the girls locker room on the north side. And then on the other side, it is the athletic locker room, custodial room, technology, driver's ed. And then the small portion between the auditorium and the gym, that's all a part of the roof that's getting done this summer.
That like lighter tan section, is that what you're talking about?
So the lighter tan, are you talking about like the kidney bean or the?
On the kidney bean.
Okay, so the kidney bean is original to the building. That's like the brown gravel that you see.
Yeah. And parts of that are being replaced this summer that were damaged due to wind or no?
On the, to the left of the bean?
Okay.
Where you see the roof that goes like that?
Uh huh.
So that one and the one on the bottom of the screen where it goes like that.
Okay.
So both of those are getting done this summer.
Okay.
I think it's the wings.
Yeah, the wings.
The wings.
So the one directly off of the big parking lot, that's the one that insurance deemed a wind damage. It delaminated from the roof, so they said that they would replace that one with the portion of the other side, like right above the concession stand.
And you were explaining to us in the facilities meeting that this is like a wind tunnel section.
Yeah, so between the homeowner's fence and that and the building, the assessor from the insurance said that that's like a natural wind tunnel because it actually starts like all the way over by the playground by the junior high, and then all throughout between the junior high and high school and the resident fence, it just kind of like tunnels right through there. So then we go to the parking lot slide. So ranked in order of replacement, the south school lot is one of the worst in the district. Following that is Miller, and then the junior high lot and front loop. So when talking about parking lots, there's always issues with stormwater management. So there's a couple of different strategies with that to deal with. With the Miller school lot, one of the worst areas is the back section of the building. So what we would recommend is removing that for green space because, again, if you look at the landscape of that area, all the homeowners that live to the east of Miller, all their backyards are sloped towards Miller. And on a really rainy day, there's almost a river that goes from the homeowners all the way to Washington. So that lot is in really bad shape. It also is not on like proper base materials, so that's why it is sunken and rose in so many different sections. So I think the best bet would be to remove that and add green space. It would give some additional areas for the kids to use for gym class, that kind of thing. It wouldn't, like right now, we have such a playground issue because of nowhere else to go, whereas at Miller, that would give them more space. The south lot is also kind of an interesting lot. It too is kind of like, we needed a parking lot here, let's add one. So it's kind of, it's not properly installed. It's original, same thing. It just kind of has sunken in places, has rose, and, you know, it's just kind of what happens. So the only two lots that we recommend maintaining is the high school and the Manning lot. So that's typical steel coating, crack filling, you know, trying to extend the life as much as you can. The high school pool, so most of the infrastructure of the pool is original to the building. A lot of issues we have with the pool comes from electric, where the corrosive environment of the pool from the chlorine has just eaten away a lot of the electric in the pool, specifically the pool room, like the mechanical room where we have the boiler, the filter system. And again, it's just, it's one of those discussions where, what do we do with it? Because, you know, it's a lot of money to renovate the pool, but it's also a lot of money to close the pool. So, you know, it's just one of those things. Right now, operating the pool is one of the only things you can do until you make a decision. And kind of assessing what that looks like, we only have one renter using the pool. It is worked into the curriculum of the high school, and then we also, our athletics use it to some degree. But again, just a bigger conversation. Kind of the same thing with the Manning infrastructure. So currently, we're using steam for heat and window units for air conditioning. The boilers were replaced in the early 2000s, but most of the piping is original to the building. So depending on where you're at, that could be almost 100 years old, it could be almost 60 years old. Many of the leaks just start as pinholes and, you know, it's just a lot of patching. So it's not necessarily a huge cost, but it's a failing infrastructure. I mean, it just, it is what it is. It's as old as it is. The only thing we can really do is patch it, and then when we have too many leaks on that, we replace it during Christmas break, spring break, those kind of things. There's also a lot of issues with the pneumatic temperature control, so that's what kind of keeps the building comfortable. So really at Manning, you have one or the other. It's either too hot or it's too cold, just because the temperature control is just very dated, the way it's a pneumatic system as opposed to electric, adds a lot of layers to certain things. Again, the problem being at Manning is that replacement would require a year or so to plan. It would also require some sort of plan if it's in phases or if, how do we do it in sections where we can still operate come August when kids are coming back? And then Miller and South consideration, so I put this on here basically to explain that those two buildings are in relatively good shape. South is in need of a roof over the student section. When that is done, it really only needs a parking lot. Miller School has some of the same issues as Manning, but because it's a hot water system, we are not seeing like all the corroding pipes like we do at Manning, and it operates fairly well for what it is. The roof at Miller was also part of the 2005 project. And some of these things also vary, like the material of the roof at Miller is easier to deal with than the material of the roof at the high school pool. Like the material that's on there requires different kinds of tear-off, different kinds of replacement. So like a roof at Miller would be much easier to replace in the future than what we have at some spots of the high school. And again, just the South, South School, we did receive the school maintenance project assist with that. Final thoughts? Prioritizing these projects is very difficult because we don't, I kind of say like we have a 1A and a 1B system, like, you know, you could, the roofing is a problem, the parking lots are a problem. I would say that roofing is more of a problem just because of the damage that can be created from a leaking roof versus the parking lot. Same thing with kind of like the pool. Like right now, the cheapest thing to do with the pool is maintain and operating until, you know, a decision can be made or discussions can be had. Shutting it down requires a lot of money to fill it, to disconnect all the mechanicals. It's just, it's an expensive problem either way. Completing the junior high project, I think would put the district in a very good position because the high school mechanically is in very good shape, the roofing is the problem there. The junior high essentially, if the lighting was done with the HVAC, that school would be in very good shape. South School would have pretty much everything done once the roof is done in the parking lot, which would leave Manning and Miller, and Manning being the biggest headache of all of them, really. So again, this presentation is just kind of to put the radar on certain things, just to say like, these things are out there, these things are aging, it's, discussions need to be had, and, any questions?
So I have a question about the pool, actually. So you explained why it costs so much to close it down, which was going to be my question. It seems like just throw some crap in there and fill it up, but you can't do that. So I understand that now. The other question I have is, you know, you mentioned there's only maybe one group using it for practices or?
For rental, we have a rental group.
Okay. With the FMC and auditorium in town, have there been conversations with that group about it being utilized potentially for that? I mean, I know they have a great, big, huge facility, but they also have classes that book up really quickly and, you know, their facility might be at capacity at times. So are there?
I think that's.
Maybe you're not the person, maybe I should be direct. Kevin and Kim.
Mary Ann Kaufman, who's involved with an auditorium, she did rent from us occasionally while they were trying to get things going and stuff. And I think probably she just wants to keep her, I haven't had any further conversations, but I would guess that she wants to keep her classes in a state-of-the-art facility.
Yeah.
Her PE classes also use the pool.
Yeah.
So it's not used as much after school, but during the school day, the pool is utilized by her PE classes.
We use cost estimates from Hinsdale. I believe they closed the pool recently, and it's just a lot of, there's a lot to it. There's a lot of excavating. I think there's a lot of insurance aspects of it.
Got it.
Obviously, if you drain the pool, eventually like the pool will start to heave up. So there's just protocols you have to do for closing it, and it's just a very expensive.
Yeah, everything's more expensive than it seems, of course.
So we had a super in-depth joint facilities and finance committee meeting where we talked through all of this in a ton of depth. And part of what you guys see in the board memo there is from that meeting, some of the expected costs. But we also kind of tasked, tasked the administration with a couple of different things, and one of them was trying to track, now that we're coming out of COVID, to some extent at least, trying to track on the pool specifically, what are we actually losing? Pre-natorium, it was, it was at least paying for itself, the maintenance as far as from rental and whatnot, but the changes post-natorium are harder to track because the auditorium opened and then, and then COVID. So, but we tasked them with that, and we all kind of agreed that we would need to have a much larger conversation about, about the pool, that building, all of our potential, you know, things that could be done, but also having a very good understanding of, what are we actually spending there?
Right.
You know, what is it not paying for? Like, you know, how much are we dumping into it every year, if anything?
Right.
So that was part of it, and we talked about that with like the parking lots too, and the LED lighting at the school. So I guess, long story short, this pool was part of that, but we did have a super in-depth conversation about a lot of this stuff.
Right, and so the purpose, the memo, what we did was took things that really are capital projects, and then also things that could come out of the O and M budget that are more, even just some equipment pieces that we need, or some other kind of projects that are more repair, a couple of, you know, door replacements, some things like that, that are really more routine maintenance, and some of those will fit into this year's budget still, if we can actually acquire, you know, like some of the doors and things like that. So we'll be working on that. But the biggest thing was later, you know, Steve Cashman will talk next about the junior high HVAC replacement and the cost of that. And we have some funding for that. We have the $2 million that I've set aside that we're going to transfer probably later this month to capital projects, specifically, you know, for that project. We have $600,000 in one of the ESSER grants for that, $2.6 million. But we need to issue, we need another funding mechanism for the HVAC project at the junior high. So there's a couple of different options, and Liz Pennacey from Raymond James will talk about that as well. But what I wanted to do with those two options, one option is really to just issue working cash bonds in the amount of the differential between the monies that we already have set aside for that project, or issue some additional monies, knowing that we have all of these other projects that we still need to do without a funding mechanism. So the junior high roof and, you know, the next thing, and the parking lots and those things. So to give you that big, that big picture, you know, we have over $12 million, $13 million to $20 million of needs, and we don't have enough working cash bond capacity to do that. So.
By how much, Kim?
By about 15 million. Yeah, 15 or 17 million, so, yeah.
So we, we thought collectively, the committees thought that it would be a good idea to kick it off with the next five-ish years, roughly, of, of things that, that we're gonna have to spend in the next, in the next five years or so. And a lot of these numbers, you know, are pre-COVID numbers, pre-inflation numbers too, so keep that in mind. But, so understanding that this is really stuff that is going to have to be done in the next five years, and it's a pretty long list, and it has a whole lot of zeros on all the pages, lots of zeros behind all of them. So thinking through the difference between like what can be fit into the yearly budgets as part of our operating expenses, doors and whatnot, and what really are we going to need to finance in some form or another, gives us the opportunity, when we already knew we were going to have to finance here for, for the HVAC, which is, which is not even optional in the, in any format, we knew we were going to have to finance there if we wanted to. We have some options with our financing to take care of some of these larger projects.
Can I ask a question? I'm going to preface this with money stuff is not really my thing, so I'm going to need this like very clearly, you know, explained.
We will have it explained shortly.
Here's, here's what I have, and you just tell me like what is, if I'm getting this. So I'm hearing that we've got 13 to 20 million dollars worth of projects to complete, that we might be about $15 million short of funding those, and working cash bonds is one way that we fund these and the ESSER grants. What are, so we need money. So what are the options? Can you just say like A, B, C, D? These are options for money?
So, yeah.
Oh, that's the whole presentation? Oh, fantastic.
There's a whole presentation on it. Yes, and it's, and I want to be clear, it's not so much we need the money. It is more how, how our current financing mechanisms are utilized that we already have in place. So, and, and we're going to go into much more detail during the finance presentation. It's not so much we need money, you know, taxes are going to go up. That's not what this is about. It's about understanding how and where the money can come from for these things that are going to have to happen. And, and the choices that we as a board have as it pertains to that.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, what?
Yeah, so that's gonna, that's gonna come in during finance. So we thought it would be good to kick off with how much and what needs to happen, and then a super. And then a super detailed conversation about the junior high, which I think, I think the majority of the, of the information will probably be new information for most of the board members here, and a lot of really good historical information about, about the junior high and this project. And then going into our options for, for how we fund it and how it is funded.
Great. And then Leah, I think you alluded to this in terms of the conversation that the finance committee had. But also, Kim, I'm just wondering in the, in the memo, like as an update, as far as the larger conversation about the pool, we've got pool shutdown costs, pool renovation costs, but just an annual operating cost for the pool, just to have that as a third comparison would be really helpful.
That was one of those things we asked her for, for, that we just don't, that it, that information doesn't exist consistently now because of COVID.
Anything we can get to get a general sense.
As, as we talk through, as we have a larger conversation about the pool, having that information is gonna be critical, yeah.
All right, are there any other comments or questions for Joe? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to the HVAC presentation.
And then Steve Cashman from Cashman Stahler Group is here to go over the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
I know.
Okay, I'm Steve Cashman, I'm principal architect at Cashman Stahler Group. Natalie Critchley is an architect at our firm. And then Wesley is a mechanical, sorry, one of his coworkers. Dan McCurdy is a mechanical engineer at Amoco Engineering, who is a consulting engineer to our firm, and has also worked with us here in the district for more than 10 years. I wanted basically to give you just an overview of this project, kind of the context, and then I'd be happy to get into any kind of detail. I wanted to keep it general, but then I'd be happy to go back and answer any questions as we get into this. Matt Lebing, who helped us put together the cost estimate, he's a partner at Executive Construction Inc. in Hillside. He had an emergency that he texted me on the way here, so was unable to attend. But we've all worked with him as we put together the solution, together with Joe, and then came up with the cost estimates. The history of the rooftop units, we first got involved with this district in 2007. And before we interviewed with the district, we were touring the junior high. And I thought it was very unusual that the principal of the junior high knew an awful lot about rooftop units. That was, he's what he told me when he saw us as an architect. They have been a problem, that was 2007, they've been a problem almost since they were installed. And it's been a real challenge for the maintenance staff here, and they've been on a diminishing return, their past or useful life for sure. They're basically the second generation rooftop units. They're gas-fired heat and then direct expansion cooling, like you'd have in residential. They're unfortunately installed, the bottom of them are about three feet above the roof, so it's very difficult to do any maintenance on those without a ladder, which creates some safety hazards, especially when these are heating units and you need to maintain them in the winter. It's quite a challenge. There's some photos here of a typical unit up off the roof. There's a series of them. They were installed in 1999. There were some issues with the original installation. The spec when they were bid was not a closed spec with, say, three manufacturers that were approved by the district. It was kind of open. So a company called Octagon was, won the bid, went out of business a couple of years later, and they've really just been a challenge ever since. The overall scope of work, so there's the demolition of the existing units, demolition also of, in most cases, of those structures, so that we can install any new equipment down at a normal elevation. Instead of having gas-fired rooftop units, which is common in small commercial properties, we're gonna basically create a central plant, heating plant, which is much more efficient in the existing boiler room. So there'd be modular gas-fired boilers, hot water heat, not steam. There would also then be a chilled water plant. Having DX cooling on the roof is not very efficient. They've also, we have issues with the refrigerant, and it's not good for the environment, very costly to replace. We would create a new chiller, so we'd basically have a, a central salt plant that would have, create chilled water and hot water for the two seasons. In the existing classroom areas, and you'll see this in another drawing, we basically had to remove the ceilings to get to the existing ductwork to remove that, install the new air handling units and new ductwork. The ceilings would be removed and installed in entirety. We looked at this, as we got more detail, we could tell the costs were expanding over what we had looked at back in 2018 when we did the life safety survey. So we created an alternate bid to, the base bid would be to reinstall the existing light fixtures, which are fluorescent fixtures like these, and the alternate bid to, to replace those with LED lighting. Overall, there would be increased efficiency, much more better temperature control, and obviously much safer to maintain. This is kind of an example of what a vertical univentilator is. At Manning, there are horizontal univentilators at the windows. At South School, we have some of these univentilators. In the meeting, large meeting room at South School, there's a vertical univentilator. This allows for individual temperature control in classrooms. And basically, we would duck, bring piping to these locations with either chilled water or hot water, and also then put in a new louver at the outside wall to bring in increased outside air, which obviously because of COVID, we know is much more beneficial. This shows kind of the extent of just the ceilings that need to be replaced. The area in red is where we need to get to this, the ductwork, some of its original, some from 1999. The area on the left-hand side of this view is the commons and the gym. There are two air handlers up on either side of the stage area that serve those areas. The commons currently has air conditioning, that's not an original unit, it's been replaced at some point. The gymnasium area is not air-conditioned. Years ago, we were involved in putting those large fans in to try to make it more manageable, especially in the spring, but it's, still gets pretty stifling hot in there. This shows a typical classroom, where in the corner, there'd be, it's about a two-foot square enclosure, which is the vertical univentilator. Joe's able to basically pull panels off it to maintain it. We would then remove a new ductwork above the ceiling for supply air and return air. The existing building has supplied ductwork that's in the concrete slab around the perimeter. That would be basically abandoned and placed and capped, so that we'd have all new ductwork and new ventilation. The cost estimating approach, so back, we, every 10 years, we do a 10-year survey for school districts. So as part of that process, this, this has been, like, it's been identified for a long period of time. We looked at it, came up with a couple of concepts of what we thought it would cost, this is back in 2018. And it was basically this option A and option B. Option B was basically replacing the same equipment that's there. Basically removing them from the structure, getting a new multi-zone gas-fired DX cooling unit and installing it and reusing the ductwork. Option A was going in with a, at the time, we were anticipating, looking at a VAV system, working with Joe, we came up with this. Our option A is slightly different, but again, it's new ductwork, new distribution, better temperature control. The 2023 is basically showing if you escalated that, in the last 25 years, public school work escalates about 4% a year. This year is totally different, but about 4% a year, so this is just looking at what that would be in today's dollars, which is the 2023 estimate based on that health life safety survey. When we were doing that work, that was very broad brush. We were surveying all kinds of things, handrails, doors, fire alarms. That is a broad brush approach. When we, when Kevin and Kim contacted me with Joe and said, we want to move forward on this project, our first thing is let's, let's look at this in greater detail so we can get a more accurate image of what the cost is. So it's really important, in our opinion, to have a contractor involved. So we reached out to Executive Construction, we've done school projects with them, they're very good at cost estimating. And got them involved, they then brought on board mechanical engineer contractors, state mechanical worked with them, other trades, so that we could then, instead of just talking about a project, we basically started designing it, working with Joe, and came up with what we thought was the best possible solution, and then had them walk in the building and actually doing takeoffs, material takeoffs, and how much sheet metal they need, what's the structural steel? We had our structural engineers involved, mechanical electrical engineers through Dan and Kevin at their office, and demolition contractors, and basically we were able to come up with a more accurate estimate. And that's what we, our estimate is based on today.
Can I ask you something?
Sure.
Did you guys estimate timing with all of our situations also with getting needed parts for each option?
If, if this goes forward, the plan is to basically go out to bid this year, but not do the work until 2023, because lead times are a real problem now. And even just basic items like steel door frames. We just had a meeting today where the contractor thinks it's 22 weeks to get a hollow metal door frame, which is crazy. It used to be a few weeks, but it's just, there's uncertainty, and it's not unique here. We're doing two other boiler replacements in elementary, two elementary schools out in the Geneva area. And we're just so worried about getting boilers and getting piping and insulation, that we're gonna bid it this summer and do the work next year. Because, and, and you don't want to start demolition if you don't have everything you need to complete the job. So things have been so crazy the last couple of years that both those projects, until we have the equipment in hand, we're not gonna proceed. We wouldn't, we'd advise against it. And that would be the same case here. We, to ensure that we have equipment, and this is no different than like the roof project at the high school, is we talked with the contractors during bidding and said, we will pay, if you were able to get the materials and store it in an insured warehouse, go through the inventory with us, we will pay for everything except retainage. That's part of the standard agreement for a public school with a contractor, so that they can get that stuff and have it in hand early, not waiting for a delivery to the job site, to do everything early. And I think that's the approach on this project and almost all projects now. Lead times are, I mean, if you order a sofa now, they tell you, you might get it like maybe at Christmas or something, you know, next Christmas. So the two options, A and B, so the option A is what we recommend, which is a complete replacement and a new approach where we create the central chiller plant. Option B is replacement in kind, and option B is even questionable now, if it's even permitted. The units that are up there are these multi-zoned rooftop units, they're not really made anymore. There's an international energy conservation code that applies to Illinois. It's, they're not energy efficient enough, so they would have to be custom-made. And then you'd still have the problem of a change of filter, it's three feet off the ground, you gotta get a ladder. Anything breaks, you gotta pull panels off and you're working up above. You're using all the existing ductwork, and the ductwork that's in the slab is very questionable. So the idea of using, we wanted to estimate it both ways and see what the costs are, but it was interesting when state mechanical tried to actually get hard firm numbers on buying those units, that people were balking at them, and you basically could find one company that could do it. So that's always scary, which is one reason we're recommending option A, not B. So in option A, the new central plant, more energy efficient, better maintenance. Option B would basically replace it in kind, and you have the issue with energy conservation and the underground ductwork, and then safety issues for maintenance. And so this is like a summary of option A costs. So the estimated construction costs are about 5.8 million. We, as I was doing these, I've worked with Kim long enough, I could just feel like her, she was probably feeling uneasy, like, because, you know, the numbers were not trending, you know, the right way, but we like to kind of lay all the cards on the table, this is what the contractor came up with. So we said, well, let's, what if, what would be the cost if we did the lighting as an alternate fit? Because you truly could. And even, even as, if you went forward with this, we could create an alternate bid for lighting so you could see exactly what that cost is, and making an add alternate to the project. As we got into it, the, Joe commented on the domestic hot water system, which is quite old. In replacing it, we then need to do a little bit additional work, this $15,000, which is going to each of the lavatories and the bathrooms, and putting mixing valves in so that we prevent any scalding. It's a state plumbing code requirement. And then we include fees, and then a deductive alternate, if we, and again, we were trying to look at options for, for Kim and for the district, is if we did not do the work in the commons area and the gymnasium, and basically focused on the classroom area to the east and deferred that, we just want to know what's the value of that. And that's basically this $518,000. The issue is, those are problematic units anyway, and to defer them, you're gonna see that 4% a year. You know, if inflation gets back to normal, as far as construction matters, it's still gonna keep costing 4% a year for material escalation and, and labor rate increases. This is option B, which was at 4.9 million, we have the alternate bids. So it's basically about 900,000 plus less than option A. And that would be basically replacing in kind what you currently have. Overall schedule, if you went forward with this project, this is assuming you went forward, if you didn't, or delayed it, things would just slide a little bit. Is basically finishing up the construction documents, we're somewhere between around 75% completed, but we'd have to complete all those documents so we could go out to bid. It's about a month to bid it, award contract this summer, and then basically do, have, give yourself a little under a year to basically get all those submittals done, pre-purchase equipment, get everything in hand, and then construction during the summer of 2023. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And sorry if that was quick, but I, I don't know how much you love talking about HVAC equipment.
Just the ending of the timing, so say a perfect world, this goes forward like this, so that timing of the actual construction is over the summer, the three months?
Right. What we would try to do, there's some work that we could conceivably do early, and we would always try to do that, to just get a foot up on it. That would likely be the work that's in the boiler room, if we were able to get any kind of work done there. But you just try to get ahead of the game so that you have the greatest chance of success. Working with state mechanical and executive construction, they see this as a doable project, it's not a scope that they can't do. It's, it would just be, the most important thing would be having that equipment in hand.
Can you speak to, and maybe Joe, you could come up here, the solution for this upcoming school year? Because we cannot get this done this summer.
Right.
We cannot get the equipment, even if we could get the money and all of those things.
Right.
And it is going to get hot. So what is the solution for the end of this current school year? And then next school year, so that our students and our staff, you know, can all breathe?
So we did, I did get quotes for rental AC units, things that we can add in each classroom, or things that we can add to the hallway. There's a couple of different approaches. We got figures for if we did one unit in each classroom, if we did two units in each classroom. Another option, if we didn't do rental units, we can also, by the layout of the junior high, there's some units that do the media center and hallways, which takes care of a good portion of the building. It wouldn't do all of it, but it would really help. So we could look at making tho, making sure those units are up and running once the heat comes. It just, we have a couple of different options.
And those are, those would be something we'd have to approve separately, or something that would come out of the O and M budget?
Well, it would come out of the O and M budget, but, I mean, we'd probably bring it to, I mean, the estimate was about $39,000. It's under what, we don't have to bid that or whatever, but we could, you know, bring it as a, as an approval item if you would like. But I'm just assuming you're going to approve it, because all the teachers and students will want that comfort.
Well, we want that too. We don't want, it, it gets pretty, it gets pretty sticky.
One of the things to mention, so the initial quote that we got was to do installation over spring break. So part of that was because of the building, we wanted to know, once these are installed, like what kind of breakers are gonna trip, what kind of problems we may have. Once we saw the figure as to what that would cost to do it spring break, we changed, changed the path. I mean, I think it makes more sense to do it like mid to end of April, maybe even into May, like beginning of May, if we did it. I think for sure, August and September, I think it's almost mandatory. As bad as it was last year, I think that would be better to do it then than do it for the end of the school year. But we could do both.
I know Carlos.
Did you say for the, for the Band-Aid solution while this is being done, you said it's 39,000 for, for how long, a day, or?
That was for two months. So we did get.
How many times does 39,000 go into 6 million? I mean, how, all right.
No, that's a decent question.
I mean, is, is it, is, is a $39,000 solution that gets us through?
August and September.
August and September? And it's one that actually works?
The, I think Joe pulled out, the question is, the electrical, right? How many breakers it's gonna?
Well, that's the thing, we don't know, once they're in and operating, we don't know, like classroom breakers, it's all on the same electric. So, once they're up and running, we could have breakers going out during the school year. These things also need to be emptied every night, so they take the humidity out, but it goes into a storage tank. So that would have to be dumped every night. It is a temporary solution, I mean, I wouldn't.
Right, right. I get that completely, I get that.
I think that the bigger issue is the age of the units. At some point, they're going to have to be replaced, and I don't know, Joe, if we have, if these, I know the high school units were very problematic, we had a lot of repair bills, I can't remember on the junior high, if we've had a lot of repair bills.
A lot. So the problem with the junior high system is that there's about 16 rooftop units on the roof, and each, all of them have their own cooling in them. So, it's about 80 pounds of R22 gas, which is close to like $1,000 for a tank of that now. So the problems we have is when we have a leak of refrigerant, you have to have a company come out and evacuate the refrigerant that's in the unit. Then they charge it with nitrogen to see where the, where the leak is. Once they know where the leak is at, they can fix it, depending on what it is, if something needs to be replaced, if there's a pipe leak, you know, whatever it is, they use the nitrogen to find that. Once they fix the leak, they have to put nitrogen back in the unit to make sure that all the leaks are fixed, and it'll hold pressure. Once they do that, they take all that out, and they put the very expensive refrigerant in, and hope that it holds on. So, it's a lot of labor, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of material.
And that's happening whether we're using them or not?
That's been happening for the last eight to 10 years.
Okay.
And this system, this new system would also replace the heat one in it?
Yeah.
Heat and air conditioning, so.
So we would go from using 16 units on the roof, individually doing heating and cooling, to go to one chiller doing cooling and two boilers doing heat. So.
Because was the, was the old system, the heat, was that unreliable?
Depends on the time.
Initially, when I, when I, we first got involved with the district, the heating was really a problem. They were losing, they were losing heat constantly. And then I think over time, the cooling has become, has caught up with the heating, and it's become a problem.
Thank you.
The units themselves are clearly at the end of their useful life. And, I mean, the problem with this temporary solution is it's not, doesn't really meet code. You know, it's, you're allowed to do it as a Band-Aid, but not as a solution.
Right, right.
So, is there a supply issue at all with the temporary solution? Or are?
No.
Are those units available?
As long as the blowers keep going on the rooftop units.
Well, like for the, the rental AC units, no.
There's, those are available.
Yeah, they're available.
Oh, supply, okay, I meant supply air.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the other things that we wanted to do with this project too was, kind of like when you do a rooftop replacement, like these units are on the roof, so they're in the elements. So, if you were to replace them with new rooftops, it's maybe like a 15-year service life. Where with the project we're proposing, you have way less equipment. So yes, you have like fan units in each room, but your major equipment, you have three major pieces. So you drastically decrease the amount of equipment that you're taking care of.
So can you go back real quick to like the second page that shows the current roof? Yeah, so basically, all of these units that we see, there, I don't know, 12 of them or something?
There's about 16 total.
Those are basically gone in this solution, there's one.
Yeah. There, well, there'll be a chiller on the roof, and there'll be a few air handlers, like two or three air handlers.
Yeah, just over in the science area, we need to put a rooftop unit there, but it's much more simple, weighs less, because it doesn't have to have the air conditioning unit in it, or the heating unit, it's basically an air handler to handle that core science lab area. The classrooms, the vertical univentilators, were a better solution since they're on the outside wall, we can bring air right in. The core of that science area was just a challenge. But the vast majority of what you see there is going to go away.
So if I have the timing right, we vote on this in the next meeting, is that right?
Right.
So, are there any other questions for?
I have a couple more questions, but one is the, you mentioned 15-year life on, if the outdoor equipment, what is the life expectancy, I mean, no one can predict it, it's actual, but the expectancy is about what for this equipment?
The air handlers that would go on the roof instead of the rooftop units that are there now are usually more like a 40-year sort of thing.
Okay.
Usually the way it goes, around 20 years, you have to put some money into it, but it's not a replacement.
Right.
Chiller is about a 20, 25-year thing, but it's a simple replacement project. If it goes bad, it's one box, you take it out, put a new one back in.
Right.
Boilers are in the 40-year territory also.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question, kind of along the same vein as Carlos's question about like, it's obviously a huge investment, but it seems like it would last longer and be more reliable. I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit, and I don't know if you can, not exact numbers, but in general, because I have no idea what our expenditures are for current heating and cooling and electricity and things like that, but just about, you know, in this day and age, the energy efficiency piece, and the environmentally friendly and sustainability piece, like, I, I don't, obviously don't know a lot about that, but how will this investment pay off in those regards?
So we're, I'm working with Nycor and ComEd on energy estimates, like what savings would be, what the rebates would be. There's all different kinds of things with ComEd, with rebates. Like when we did the automation system, we applied for, and we're still going through the process of a rebate for that. When we replaced a chiller at the high school, we got a rebate of about $16,000 that they give you because the efficiency of the unit. The hiccup right now at the junior high is going through the lighting project, going through the fixtures, like the amount of fixtures that we had versus what we'd be installing. ComEd's working on all that. And then Nycor gets involved with the gas usage. So their whole rebate is basically based on what amount of gas you're using. I've never done a Nycor one, I have done ComEd. So, I'm interested to see what Nycor is, but the ComEd one is, is big.
Will we be using less gas?
Uh, I would say, I would say so, even though the boilers will use more gas than like individual units we currently have, we should use less based on having a schedule, based on keeping closer temperature ranges in the building. So, the Nycor one I'm not sure of, but the, the ComEd one, there's also an answer to ComEd, where if you do multiple projects, they'll add like a 20% incentive on it. So like, with this project specifically, we would qualify for getting rid of the rooftops, the automation system, and the lighting. So, again, those things kind of change year to year, but historically that's what it's been. If you can get three capital, what they deem big infrastructure projects through, there's like a bonus incentive for doing so.
Those are savings, or not savings really, those are incentives from, from utility you're talking about. I think Jess's question, I think, had to do with, with actual operating cost differential.
That should be, that should be part of the report, once we see that.
Okay.
So there's a long answer and a short answer, I'll start with the short answer.
Good.
On the, on the heating side, the new boilers are about 95% efficient. The rooftop units that are there now were about 80 when they were installed, and they're probably a little bit less than that now. So, 15, 20%, you're going to save on your gas bills. In the real world, it usually doesn't happen, because the current units are probably not providing the correct ventilation at the moment. So by the time we're done, we're going to ventilate. So, you have a better environment for the kids, you're saving energy, but your gas bill's going to be about the same. Would be my prediction.
And part of it, part of it is, I'm wondering about cost savings, but also just, you know, again, I think we have to have an eye towards just like, you know, the whole carbon footprint thing, and what, are we, are we, if we're building and putting this much money into something, is it as environmentally friendly as it can be for as long as it can be?
Yeah, that was going to actually be my, that was actually my question about, about are there alternatives? Is the gas just for the heating, or is it both heating and cooling?
Just for the heating.
Just for the heating, and is there an alternative to, to gas?
Use geothermal is popular right now. There's problems with that. A lot of the newer systems, they're still working out a lot of kinks, I think.
Right.
The geothermal, I think it requires a lot of boring down, and then running piping down to get the, basically the ground gives you, like 55-degree water, I believe. They have a lot of hull leaks.
Geothermal is probably the least energy consumption, you could, system that you could have. Downside is, as Joe said, we need to drill wells to get at the heat that's in the ground. And then the other side of it is, if, depending on how we, how we define efficiency, right now, we would switch from gas to electric. Electric as a fuel source is very much more expensive than gas. So even though we're using substantially less energy, your bills are going to go up. So there's good, there's a trade-off to it. So if, if the primary directive is saving energy, then maybe we should look at something like that. If you really want to save money with a reasonable solution in today's technology, then what we have here is probably the better solution.
Right.
How deal thermal compared to what we're proposing?
Yeah, right, in terms of.
Maybe additional costs?
Yeah, it'd be roughly the well field, I'm guessing at a million and a half-ish on top of everything that we have.
Everything else, right, so, but you're not talking about 2X, you're talking about a million more, 2 million more, to go that, to go that route, potentially, and that's without having done any real.
Yes, and the good news is that you have land. Like in an urban setting, you wouldn't have enough land to put the well field in. You have the land if that's something that you really wanted to pursue.
Okay, thank you guys, thank you.
Any other questions? Right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Dan. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the working cash bond issuance. All right, and Liz Hennessy from Raymond James is here tonight to present on the working cash bond issuance. There it is, okay, let's try to get this. There we go. Hi, everybody, I'm Elizabeth Hennessy with Raymond James, and I'm here to talk to you tonight a little bit about a working cash bond issue, which would help you fund the capital projects Joe and Steve have just reviewed. So I'm going to start with a bond market update. This is our interest rates on the municipal bond AAA index. For 30 years is the yellow line, 10 years is the red line, and one year is the purple line. And we go back to January of 19, and we saw interest rates come down. And then we hit the pandemic, and interest rates went up faster than they ever had, over 200 basis points in a matter of days. The Fed stepped in and reduced interest rates, and then we hit an all-time low in interest rates in August of 2021, or August of 2020. And then since January, we've really gone up in interest rates, driven mostly by inflation, supply chain shortages, and now it's really exacerbated by the war in Ukraine. So, interest rates are going up, but I think it's important to recognize that they're not higher than they were in January of 2019. So, if we look at this from a historical level, we're still in relatively low interest rate environment. The trend is just not going in our direction. Okay, so debt limit. The district has a debt limit based on 13.8% of the equalized assessed value, or 70,133. So plenty of debt limit, and within that debt limit, you have a specific working cash bond limit. Because working cash bonds, you can issue, subject to several limitations, one of which is this formula in the statute. So that maximum is 10,530, 530,000. You do have some of these bonds outstanding, issued in 2016 for life safety purposes. And those bonds mature in 2032. So, this page looks at another limitation, that's part of the tax limitation law. So the law says you can go ahead and issue bonds without going to the voters for referendum as long as the annual payments stay within the number that was levied back to 1994. So the idea is you can continue to issue bonds as long as the payments for those bonds don't exceed what you levied back in 94. So taxpayers won't feel really an increase. Then in 2009, they amended the formula to add a CPI factor to that. So, since 2009, it increases by CPI. So, if we look at this chart, we see the debt service extension base in 2021 was 1,424,015, that represented a 1.4% CPI. We now know that in 2022, we're going to have a CPI of 5%. So that brings that number up to 1,495. And, so, so on and so forth. After that, we're assuming in '23, a 2% CPI, 2% in '24, and 1.5% after that. That's just assumptions, they're very conservative and low, so we feel comfortable that we, those will be at least that high. If we look at the current debt service that is being paid from this debt service extension base, in 2021, there was about 1,354,000 of debt service paid on the levy, which taxpayers are currently paying. In '22, that payment drops down to 865,800. And that was very purposefully structured that way, so that the board would have the ability to go ahead and issue more non-referendum bonds for your priority capital projects. So.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but what's the, what's the reason, I mean, you said it was structured that way, but what, what's, what changes between now, now and then? What's the 500,000, what is it?
So, the 500,000 or the 629,000, which is your debt service capacity now. We just, when we issued the bonds back in 2016, we had a long conversation about when might you need to issue these bonds again, looking at your capital plans, and knowing that this resource is fairly limited, okay? It's fairly limited, because nobody knew that the tax limitation law would pick the year 1994 to establish this debt service extension base. So we're glad we have it, but every district has a different debt service extension base. So back in 2016, we said, let's make sure we have room to issue more bonds in '22 under this limit, without really increasing taxes to the community, because again, the idea is we're just extending our current payments.
I've never seen a future prediction be so accurate.
That's Kim for you.
Well done.
Carlos, the, the needs have been there, we're just trying to.
I get it, I get it, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, so, the next page, this is kind of a graphic. So, think of the purple line as that debt service extension base limit. And then the blue bars are the payments that you've got outstanding. And you can see from '21 to '22, those bars drop down, leaving room to fit in some more payments. And so, as we look, do this exercise, and think about funding some of your critical capital projects, we think about when is the next time you might need to, again, go back to this resource to fund projects?
So basically, we're, as we talk about this, yes, we could fulfill some of our needs, but we also have to think about the future of what may be needed in five years.
That's exactly right. Yes, because this is a limited resource. The only way you get that debt base over the 1,400,000, 1,500,000 where it's at, is to go back to the voters for referendum, which truly would increase taxes by more than just CPI, which is what this instrument does. Okay, so the financing needs that are identified, you know, approximately 6 million of HVAC repairs and related work, as well as parking lot repairs and roof replacements over the next three years. So, the 6 million addresses HVAC that they just reviewed. So the 6 million addresses HVAC that they just reviewed. And then there's additional parking lots that were identified and roof replacements on the high school. So the district has available, as Kim mentioned, 2.6 million to invest in these projects. 2 million would be from your fund balance, and 600,000 are of ESER funds. So that's 2.6 million. So to just address the HVAC portion, we could use that 2.6 million plus 3.8 million of working cash bonds, which would be repaid over nine years. So that's going to be our first option to review. The second option shows the issue of 5.6 million or 5.5 million, that's repaid over 11 years. So that would address not only your HVAC, it would also get to those parking lots and some of those roof replacements that are on the critical needs list over the next three years. So, and as we talked about looking at future capacity, we made sure in each of these options, you have additional debt capacity in the year 2027. So just saying, hey, in five years, you know, let's make sure you have room to issue some debt again. Okay, so option one, this is 3.8 million of working cash bonds paid back in over nine years. And you can see in the middle column that says remaining DSEB capacity, where it's highlighted in green, that's where you've got more room to issue more debt. And so the tax rate increases, in this case with the new EAV assumption, by 2.3 cents. So it increases that little bit because we've got a 5% CPI in '22 levy year. So we're able to kind of go up a little more, that's an unusual CPI from our history of CPIs. But the limitation law caps it at 5%, you know. So we can see the impact on different market value homes. So we looked at a $300,000 home, a $500,000 home, and a $700,000 home. Just to look at a wide range of market value homes in the community. And you can see, you know, the impact year over year. In the first year is going to be about $22 for the $300,000 home, $38 for the $500,000 home, and $53 for the $700,000 home. So then in the following years, based on our CPI assumptions of 2% and 1.5%, it goes up a few dollars. And then when the bonds get paid off, it goes down. So I just wanted you to be aware, though, that there is a slight tax increase from these bonds, just simply because we've got a higher CPI here in this levy year 2022 than we've had in past years.
And so just, there was a question here. So those columns are on the far right-hand side of this slide.
Does everybody see them?
So that increase, right, $22 on a $300,000 home, is not, is not necessarily due to what we're bonding out, but it's more due to the CPI increase that we have no control over, if I understand that correctly?
Yes, yes. That CPI allows us to pay off more bonds in '22. The old CPI assumption was actually quite low. I went back, it's actually 1% is what we assumed because we were very conservative back in 2016. So, you know, we're going from the debt service increasing basically 1% a year to now 5% a year. And so that's, again, something we can't control, but it's something that allows you to pay back more bonds sooner and keep your debt schedule shorter than it otherwise would be. So that's a good thing.
I just, go ahead.
No, I'm the same. Purpose is the same way, it's just, so, I'm going back just to reiterate the impact on the home. So what is that?
Increase from just this bond issue.
So that increase in taxes.
Taxes, property tax.
Property taxes.
Hold on a second, because I, because I want to make sure that people following along are really clear that we're talking about assumptions that we're making about how property taxes are going to function, not decisions that we're making about how property taxes are going to function. Because it could be confusing.
Great distinction.
And I don't want anyone to be confused that we're, we're saying we want property taxes to go up by $22 per home. We're saying that we expect that they will, independent of what we do here.
Well, if you issue the bonds, they will. So there's, there is a cause and effect between this bond issue and the increase. If you didn't do it, it would have gone less.
It would go up less. This is, so, well, then, then that's what I wanted to understand.
Yes.
Because it's, that's the part that isn't clear. I thought that we were saying that we were expecting a 5% increase based on.
Well, it is, and that's the law. But if we didn't issue these bonds, we would not have this small increase, this small 2-cent increase on the tax rate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
And so, and that's the, that tax rate, that's the .2.
Yes, .023, yeah.
.02, thank you.
So we were, we were very focused on property taxes in particular, and we appreciate all of the questions because we really, we dug into it at the finance and facilities meeting. Because we, we really wanted to have a, a true understanding of kind of how the levy works, you know, how it affects our property taxes. We are not, property taxes that go towards us, CUSD 201, that are, that the 201 constituents, you know, pay are between 69 and 80% of their tax bill. It's the vast majority of their tax bill. So we really wanted to make sure that, we understood that this was not, you know, a raising of someone's tax bill, but more of a keeping it the same, or keeping it very similar. Tax bills would have adjusted no matter what because of CPI. And will probably, again, next year, whatever that number comes in at, maybe 2%. But, so we really wanted to be very focused on not increasing taxes, but really keeping them. And, and, and when we're talking about, you know, $22, $38, $53, so, you know, $38 on, you know, a $5, $6,000 tax bill roughly, 4,000 of that goes towards the school. And we're talking about a $38, you know, to 4,000 plus spent towards the school. So it is a negligible amount, and again, it is, it is a piece of how the structure works, not that we are raising those taxes in order to bond these out. What we have to decide is how to structure those bonds for our capacity in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we want to do it, right.
And I thank you for saying that, because this is open, and we're being upfront what, what's required and what is the outcome of what we're doing here. And even saying again, or maybe you can state it again as I'm reading, the non-referendum bonds. So there is a law that this is allowed, but you are, we're structured in that how much is allowed.
Right.
As, you know, our, you know, our stakeholders understand that this is why they have this. But we're also being open and saying what that outcome is.
Right.
With that decision of using non-referendum bonds.
Right. And if I could just interject, if you look at the proposed DSUB tax rate, you can see that it's relatively steady in the .23 to .27 cent, you know, range. And that is one of the things that, you know, the district has historically done, is issuing these bonds so that there is not a, a great tax rate change. So you could let this expire, you could not issue anymore, and your tax rate is going to go down by that. But one of the things that we've tried to do is structure things so that it, it's a relatively even, flat cost, you know, to the district, or to the taxpayers, that they don't see these big fluctuations up and down and go, well, okay, wait a minute now, oh, great, my tax rate went down, and then now, two years from now, now you've raised it back up. And so that's part of the, the whole structuring process. And, you know, we've been doing this, I've done a couple working cash issues with Liz, and there is at least two prior to that that I know of. So it, it, that has been the philosophy of the district and, and where, you know, and what we're trying to, again, accomplish here.
And I have a follow-up question, and that you can tell me if this comes in later. But I, as I ask, and we've, I, I heard this said even before we, this board has been here, that a lot of these things have been kicked, the can has been kicked down the road. So is that part of the reasoning? Is, you know, this change or trying to keep it steady? I'm trying to understand why has this been kicked so far down the road?
Well, first of all, the needs are great.
Yeah.
Okay, when Kevin and I started, the pool was an issue, it's still an issue, it's going to continue to be an issue. Some of the roofs, the parking lots, everything else. One of the things that we've tried to go out for referendum, we have been unsuccessful in those attempts. And so even when we redid the high school, so some of the priorities for the board have been, you know, putting in the windows at the high school, and closing the classrooms. And we think that that obviously has had some great advantages for our students, their learning and their success. We also, when we issued those 2016 bonds, that was in the time of safety and security. And so again, including having secure entrances at all of our buildings, and closing the classrooms because obviously a lot of school districts were running into a lot of issues where their buildings weren't safe and having some very tragic things happen. And so the board kind of readjusted kind of the focus on that. So maybe moved away from some roofs and parking lots to put student and staff safety and security at the forefront.
And where bonds used then?
Again, these were bond, that's the 2016 bonds, what we did with that. So we were able to, you know, we issued what we could and, and got as many projects done with that focus at that time. And so now we're shifting again. There's nothing to say that at some point down the road, you might need to look at other financing options. This, we're fortunate that, that we have this available to us because there, I've worked in a district where we didn't have this available. And so it, it, it is nice, it would be nicer if it were larger, and would help us get some things done sooner. But, you know, Joe's done a nice job of prioritizing things, and he's worked hard to get grants. Both he and I have written, and we've been successful getting two school maintenance project grants to do things. And so, you know, we've gotten them back-to-back years now. So we're, we're trying to do whatever we can to get things done. And then, and again, we start with a plan today, but that doesn't mean that we might not have to shift our focus based on some other priorities going forward.
Thank you. I have comments with that, but I want you to finish your presentation.
Sure. So, you know, and in terms of kicking the can down the road, if you're referring to like projects, I think the district's done a commendable job accomplishing a number of projects using what resources you have. Your fund balance in this debt service extension base is another one of those resources that comes into play. So, and these bonds are not paid off way down the road. We're talking about a nine-year payback or an 11-year payback. So that's really nice and conservative, and again, gives you that flexibility in the year 2027 to do this again as you continually reevaluate and prioritize your projects. So here's just a graphic of this option one, the 3.8 million paid back over nine years. And then here's option two, this is 5.6 million repaid over 11 years. We still have a window for more projects in 2027. And the tax impact is pretty much identical in terms of the first several years. It just goes out a few years longer, two more years than option one. So again, small increases, three or four dollars a year for each option after the initial kind of increase because of our 5% CPI. But I think these are both excellent options and sets a district up for accomplishing its goals in the future as well. So this is the graphic that goes with that option two. So you can see the green bars go out two more years, the year 2031. So we're, you know, 2031 levy year, so. Any questions on the options?
Is that the biggest benefit is just getting a change in the payback, I guess, what's available between the two options? Getting more and then extending that timeout a little bit more?
Yeah, I, I'm, I don't think it's a problem going out 11 years. I think it's a really very conservative approach still. And you get your priority projects done over the, for the next three years. You'll lock in interest rates today, which are continuing to go up. You've heard the Fed is going to continue to increase rates. The good news is, if you lock the rates in on the bonds now, maybe you can earn some more interest on your fund balances in the future, which will help supplement more capital projects, so.
And Kim, is that something you'd also decide on next meeting?
Yes.
What, the 3.8 versus 5.6?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We kind of have to do 5.6, right? That would be my recommendation, only because of the priority, some of the roofing projects and things like that that we really, we really should. Right, right. It doesn't cover all of that. This is just a little bit, but it allows us to start working on, on some of those things.
So here's this proposed calendar. So we talked to the finance committee on March 22nd. Tonight, we're speaking with a full board. And April 26, we will bring a document called the Resolution of Intent to Issue Up to 6 Million of Working Cash Bonds to the Board for Your Consideration. That's exactly when you can make the final decision. That's why we say up to 6 million. It can be 3.8 if the board decides you just want to do the HVAC on the junior high. So once that resolution is approved, the notice is published in the paper, and that begins a 30-day petition period. If within 30 days, 10% of the registered voters were to submit a petition to the district, that would cause the issue to go to referendum. So this is a, a system that the statute has put in place, and is something every, we go through on every one of these issues. Then on May 17, there would be a public hearing on the issue of the bonds. So that would be right, you know, within your May 17 regular board meeting. And then June 21, that's when the board would adopt the parameters, bond resolution, authori- authorizing the sale of bonds. So we can't sell the bonds till we get through these regulatory periods and public hearings. Then you would receive bids on your projects. We would sell the bonds on June 28. The fund, district will get the funding on July 28. So that's basically the schedule. Questions?
Copy of the next agenda item, but Liz already discussed it. The copy of that parameters resolu- that resolution is.
Notice of intent.
Notice, notice of intent is in item number four. And it talks about the petition period and, and all the things as well.
So I, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. And first off, I want to say thank you. This information from everybody tonight has been really helpful. And the financing piece in particular, I feel like closed a real big hole in my knowledge as far as how these large capital projects that have to happen do happen, and our effect on them as, as a board. And so this was really helpful. I know we asked a ton of questions of you guys in our meeting before, and you guys have answered a ton of questions as well. So I think it's, it's been just incredibly helpful. One thing that you did not touch on that came up in our meeting was if, if there are new homes built in Westmont, does this increase? Does our, does our ability increase? It does not.
That's correct.
So, because, because of how this is locked down by that statute. So could build, you know, X number of new homes in Westmont, this isn't, our bonding capacity is not going to grow.
That's correct.
Thank you.
What other comments or questions does the board have for Liz or Kim?
Part of my comment was like.
Part of my comment was like, again, I thank you for going through this kind of stepwise, especially for, it felt like for me just to understand how this works and, and how we are able to pay, um, for things as a stakeholder myself. And I know some of the comments, um, that we may get or what comes in the future. I think it's important to say what you have said, Kim, is, you know, we, we have great needs and, um, we have to find ways of doing it and being responsive to stakeholders and the community members. And I think, um, I think you guys have done a great job in finding ways to do that because we could throw referendum every day, every meeting and, and put it all on, on the stakeholders. But, um, we're finding ways and prioritizing. You know, I think, I thank you guys for that and going through that and, and finding responsible ways for doing it, so, thank you.
Yeah, and helping us understand it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think all this, because I was also in the other meeting. Very helpful for along those lines because we do have big issues that really need to be talked about. And I know we have a lot more followers over the last few years than used to follow the board. This is all laid out here of what needs to be done and what needs to get done. And Manning is a big issue and that's why we've had discussions about other things. And it's just the stakeholders need to see where we may have to possibly go in the future. Everything's been held together very well, but this is an eye-opener for a lot of people to see, so.
Yeah, I mean, you, you brought up something that I don't want to gloss over, um, is Manning, right? Joe called out that the majority of our buildings, um, based on this round, will be in pretty good shape. He did not say that for Manning? Okay, Manning is a crumbling fortress made of cinder blocks. And we have all, we have all, many of us been in a, a, a lot of the old homes here in Westmont. Manning is in some spots a hundred years old, sixty years old elsewhere. And when you start one thing, it's never one thing. And we especially, um, and the facilities team especially expects that that is not going to be the case at Manning. So if we can, if we have the opportunity to solve some of these things with this bond, a significant chunk of them, or get a little bit further on them with this bond, um, so that we can then tackle that issue potentially with the, with the bonds in five years. Um, and hopefully with a much, much more money in that TIF account, maybe.
The unfortunate thing is that the TIF has not materialized. The way that the village had projected. And so I, if that had been in place, you know, that we would be having some different conversations too about Manning. But again, like you said, you start one thing, it's like, where do you start with Manning? Uh, you know, rip the Band-Aid off and then, but it kind of like one thing leads to another. And so that will definitely.
I think we are going to have to funnel every resource that we have into Manning. So if we can, potentially in the pool, but if we can take care of these other buildings and not be like playing whack-a-mole with, with roofs leaking and, and parking lots falling apart and like stop playing whack-a-mole there, maybe we can start, you know, formulating some plans, funneling some resources. And that whole area, you know, the downtown of Westmont could be entire, could be a totally different place in five years. Um, I hope it's a totally different place in five years and Manning's right in the middle of it. So, um, but yeah, I, I, I'm for the, the larger bond amount because, um, I think it's important that we take care of as much of this as we can with this bond so that we can then really funnel our intellectual resources, our monetary resources, um, our staff resources into what I think will be the next humongous project, which is, which is solving a lot of stuff at Manning.
And I, I agree with that while interest rates are low.
As low as they're going to be this year.
Well, and unfortunately with the interest rates, you know, timing is everything because we didn't have all the pieces we needed a month or two ago.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can move to item five on the agenda, is that right? Okay, item number five on the agenda is Westmont High School's science textbook.
So, um, the, uh, science department at Westmont High School.
Thank you.
They haven't done. They haven't done a textbook adoption in over ten years. And so they put together, they reviewed textbooks and they put together a list of textbooks that they would like to, uh, purchase. Not all in this budget year, um, they're prioritizing the textbooks. And so there is money in the budget for this year, probably the earth science textbooks. And then building the budget for next year and possibly year three, they'll, um, they'll be able to purchase textbooks for next school year out of, you know, the next fiscal year budget. And so that's their plan. And so, uh, they're looking for the board then. We do have it as an action item to approve the adoption of the textbooks. And then, um, the high school working with, uh, Kim this year and Tony Anthony, uh, next year will, um, put together a plan to purchase those textbooks to get those in the hands of our students.
I guess the only question I have, is there like electronic versions of these books or is this hardcover or?
Uh, these are, um, hardcover textbooks because even the, um, the, uh, electronic version, there's, uh, you know, anytime there's changes, then there's, uh, additional cost involved.
It's like, isn't it year-to-year licensing with electronic for students?
It's still expensive too, because you pay for the license, so.
So it's not worthwhile.
Right, at least with, with this, we can have them for a couple of years. As opposed to year-to-year for every student, you're paying that licensing agreement.
I never even, I, I never even thought about electronic books before.
That's a good question.
And I, I'm just curious, not for this, not for this, this is a general, is there, is there a breaking point? I mean, is there a, where is this going? Does anyone at the school district ever kind of sat down and?
I don't think, well, um, I think they, uh, like in terms of resources for courses, that they're typically using more software.
Sure.
Versus the, the actual text. I, you know, I think that they were projecting that by now, that's where education is going. All, um, you know, uh, software-based.
Electronic.
Electronic. It hasn't, uh.
It hasn't panned out that way.
Hasn't panned out that way now.
This is the self-driving car of education.
Right.
Get there eventually, is that, is that what it is and maybe get pulled over by a cop?
And they go, wait, nobody's in the car.
Nobody's there.
Sorry, my books were all in print.
Like my mom had my same book that I had.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, anybody else on the science test, textbooks, are we good? Okay, uh, number six, update on the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
All right. This might be the quickest one yet.
Let's keep setting those records.
Yes.
Right?
Sorry about that, Kevin.
No, no problem. Okay, so our updated twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. And again, like we've always done in cases, this is the first time someone is viewing this. We have our guiding principles that we've been very consistent, we've adhered to them all year. Health and safety of our students and staff is our number one priority. And then, uh, full-time in-person learning, which we've been able to manage throughout the entire year. Meaningful engaging academic experiences, uh, we're focused on the social emotional needs of our students. Consistent stability for our students and staff, which again, we've been able to maintain throughout the year. And then the staff development. The, um, as I mentioned, I think in our last meeting, the, the metrics have changed a little bit in terms of the IDPA CDC determining when, here is our high level, medium level or, um, a low level of transmission. And before it was positivity rate and new cases per hundred thousand. Now it's a floating scale, it's still new cases per hundred thousand, but then it's also the, uh, number of new, uh, admissions per hundred thousand, uh, hospital admissions. And then also the percent of, uh, inpatient beds that are required. And so, again, depending upon how many, uh, new cases per hundred thousand, then they take a look at those other two metrics to determine what level we're at. And so when you look at DuPage County, we're at a low level of transmission. This is as of last Friday, we had ninety-nine, uh, new cases per hundred thousand. The, uh, hospital admissions are less than ten, four point two. And then the, um, inpatient bed use is also under ten, one point seven percent. And so that's why we're at a low level of transmission. And so that's the metric that, uh, we're using at this time. If you still don't look at the positivity rates, not surprising, since our last board meeting, we are seeing a little bit of a positive uptick. We had spring break, uh, there are more and more group activities taking place. And so that's not surprising, um, that we are seeing a little bit of a slight increase in the positivity rate. And then, uh, same thing with the new cases for hundred thousand, you know, as mask mandates have been relaxed. Again, there are more opportunities for people to meet in, uh, large groups. We had spring break, again, not, not surprising that we're seeing some of those numbers. In terms of locally, since our last board meeting, we have had, uh, two certified staff members test positive and one non-certified test positive. Uh, I think two of those, the non-certified and the certified could be attributed to spring break. And as a matter of fact, we did, some of those were determined through North Shore's, uh, weekly testing that those were, uh, found. Student-wise, again, we're not really looking at the COVID symptoms any longer. We're encouraging students to stay home, but we're really, that's really not something that we need to track. In terms of, uh, testing positive, um, since our last board meeting, um, we didn't have, as of last Friday, we're probably going to see a couple, um, for, at our next board meeting because we're starting to see a couple of positive tests. But again, uh, no real significant increases as a result of going to mask optional. Student vaccination status still about the same. Again, that's not unusual for our area. The pediatric vaccinations are running lower than, uh, adult vaccinations. And then, uh, again, as far as testing, we're still doing our, um, you know, tests to stay for those, uh, positive tests. North Shore, we're doing weekly testing, we, and I'll put this in the parent update, we're not going to have it next week with.
I, we've got it figured out for next week.
Okay, all right. Originally, there was a possibility that they would not be able to slide us to Tuesday. We're not, Monday is a non-attendance day. But it looks like now we've got that worked out, so we will be doing the, the testing next week. And again, that is on a voluntary basis and, and parents can register on a weekly basis or they can also request it, uh, to discontinue the testing. And just a reminder, you know, masks are optional, but we still have all our other mitigations in place. We have the three-foot social distancing, the hand washing is encouraged, hand sanitizers, optional weekly testing. Unvaccinated close contacts are encouraged, um, for a minimum of five days and high-touch surfaces are clean and sanitized weekly. We have, uh, our desktops are sanitized daily, our cafeteria tables are cleaned daily. Uh, we have seating charts for all classrooms, uh, K through five, outdoor mask breaks, K through eight. And then now that the weather is starting to get better, we're permitting outdoor lunch and band. And we're encouraging, uh, students to get vaccinated, we've been hosting vaccination clinics. And again, since, uh, February twenty-eighth is, um, when, uh, the, um, mask mandate was, uh, the board, uh, voted for optional mask. And, um, again, uh, just some reminders that we're still encouraging, just like any time of year or any illness, if your child isn't feeling well, you should really keep them home. And, uh, close contact is defined as whether you're masked or unmasked determines whether or not you're a close contact. And then in terms of, uh, quarantine, you know, positive cases still have to quarantine a minimum of five days. And then, uh, close contacts is recommended for, to quarantine. But again, so far, you know, if you look at our numbers, they've been very good and we haven't seen any major increases. Any questions?
Great job.
Now here, here's a question for the board. Do we want to continue the updates the next few board meetings or do you think we're?
I'd feel fine not.
I think when you send us the email on Fridays, I think that would be sufficient enough.
If anything changes, sure. But I think, um, let's give you a break from that.
I, I would say, you know, we are still, we haven't seen effects of it. But I think to say like if it's in your updates, that's good.
Okay.
I think we still should be following.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
We don't know what the future is going to bring and I still, you know, think this should be on our radar because we don't want to be caught.
Right.
That's my, was my concern with the last decision we made is that we are waiting for something and we're not being offensive, we're being defensive. But, so at least if, if we're at least following, um, or you have it still and it's in the update and we have it, I think that's good.
Agreed.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last item for discussion, information and discussion is the end of the year events, um, for the close of the school year.
So, um, well, it's really, so I'm at the rate of all things.
It's, it's busy season.
So, uh, typically, once we kind of were on pretty safe ground, I don't think we'll have any more emergency days of any type. And so we did use two emergency days, um, before we approved our, um, e-learning days. And so we'll be adding two days to the end of the school year, so the official last day of school will be June first. And the, uh, senior awards will be on May eighteenth at seven o'clock PM. Our high school graduation will be May twenty-fourth at seven o'clock PM. Junior high graduation will be May twenty-sixth at seven o'clock PM. And we are planning on doing outdoor ceremonies, that was very well received. So both ceremonies will be on the football field. Plan B will be the, um, auditorium at the high school. But, uh, right now, we're hoping for a beautiful weather like we got last year and of outdoor ceremonies.
That's great. Any questions for Kevin? We have two action items tonight, so we'll move to those. The first is the approval of the Westmont High School's science textbook adoption. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the proposed science textbooks at Westmont High School as presented.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Steckity? Yes. Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, uh, option, or, sorry, item number two, approval of the Sunrise Transportation Contract. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the one-year contract extension for special education transportation with Sunrise Southwest LLC for July twenty twenty-two through June twenty twenty-three as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Steckity?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Motion carries. Kevin, your superintendent's report?
Just, uh, one item in my report, uh, last week, uh, we celebrate a pair of professionals day. And, uh, I just want to take a moment to thank our pair of professionals and all of our support staff for everything that they do, um, especially over the last almost two years. Through the pandemic, we really have asked a lot of all of our employees and our support staff. And so we really appreciate their contribution to our district.
Thank you. Okay, uh, are there any? Yep, are there any board reports?
Can I just ask a question about the next meeting?
Yeah.
So we're going to be voting on if we're going to, this H VAC thing, right? I am very intrigued by what they said about the geothermal thing. I'm sorry for being very intrigued by that, but we, what did he say, it was going to be like an extra one million?
One to two.
One to one point five.
I don't need to casually.
They said there's a lot of bugs in that too, they're still working out a lot of kinks with it.
Like to what extent? I mean, it seemed like we just abandon it? I mean, because, uh, the, the reason why I think we should pause is because it is a huge project. And I just feel like, when is the next time that we're going to do a big?
Absolutely.
When would be the next time that we do a big replacement like that? And if we're talking about an opportunity for renewable energy, that's huge.
Yep, so I guess what my question would be for, you know, the committee that reviewed it, do you, do you know how, how much they put into that review and rec? do you, do you know how how much they put into that review and recommendation? Like was that option thoroughly vetted by the?
The geothermal?
The geothermal.
No, I don't think, I think again, because of some of the kinks and and again, additional cost and things like that, that that was not something that they focused on. It was the option A and option B.
If I'm alone in this, it's fine, we, you know, abandon it.
First of all, you're not, you're not alone, I can tell you that from my perspective. But go ahead, you were asking a question.
No, I wasn't, I had a comment with that, like I kind of take, I didn't remember his name, but the mechanical engineer.
Dan McCurdy.
Yes, Ms. McCurdy, his recommendation, he was a little soft spoken, but he said his recommendation was for what they were proposed. I guess coming for, because I I also heard them say that they looked at other schools that have this. So that's also something that was vetted. I don't know if this, I think it's an opportunity, it's looking at it from like a theoretically, yes. You know, it would be good, but is that something we can use? We don't know the structure of our lands. I think that's something we're gonna delve into that I think is is risky. And yes, and then there's their additional costs that we are kind of at our limit with bonds. And I don't know if we have, we're kind of delving in outside of bonds to get that funding for it. And again, referendums. So we have, I think we have rooms, room with the money we have to get, do this project. I think adding the unknown and additional costs is my concern with the geothermal.
I I think I would just, I'm not getting the sense that it has been fully explored.
Can we, can we approve the bond without approving the project yet? Can we get going on the financing because we know that we're gonna spend X number of dollars? And explore this piece of it?
We may have to lose other projects.
And I think Carlos has a comment that might.
It's a question, what is the, I'm just a process check here, what are we approving next week? Are we approving the issues of the bonds and the start of that process? Because if I read the calendar correctly, we're, we're asking to have the HVAC system updated. We're gonna, we're gonna ask for bids and then this board is going to approve those bids in June, if I remember the calendar correctly.
Right, so next week is the issue of the bond.
Am I understanding that correctly? So there's no reason we couldn't ask for a bid that included the option? I don't, I don't, I'm just saying.
I don't know, I can, I will contact Steve Cashman tomorrow and see what that, what that process is. I mean.
Kim, how long did it take for them to lay out this?
Long time, because we were, our intent was to be able to issue bonds in January. So we're almost three months beyond that scope.
Just from a process check though, hold on, I'm sorry, I just, from a process check, what are we approving? Are we approving?
The issuance of the bonds.
Are we approving the project as it is stated and they, and there can be no deviations from drawings? And where, if so, where are the, what are we approving?
So the intent for the next meeting was to go ahead with the bid process for the HVAC in the option A. And also to approve the issuance of working cash bonds, the sale.
Separate things. So I think what Carlos is, can we approve the the bonds? Like I think we're on the same page with that. I just think, like with such a major project and given the current climate, like literally, and you know, just to.
Also believe what you guys are asking are gonna take months to do.
I'm sorry?
I believe what you guys are asking.
And that's fine, and I guess then all I do is express my disappointment that we didn't explore one of the, that option a little more fully.
Steve said that as far as going out to bid for what was proposed, they're about eighty percent complete with their drawings and that process. So I mean, we can ask Steve what that, what does that do to that timeline? It won't change the bond timeline, but what does it do for going out to bid those timelines if we were to consider geothermal option?
Yeah, and I guess what I would say is there's a reason they didn't recommend it. I think we heard part of the reason tonight. I think it would be probably prudent for us to maybe have them write the board a memo that, you know, sort of outlines the reasons they didn't recommend that option so that we can more thoroughly understand that, because that might help us feel a little bit better about.
You know, to to generally just say like, there are some kinks, like, well, like what, you know? Because we're talking about the environment and, you know, sustainability and renewable energy. Like if we can overcome some of, if we can overcome that, like maybe it's worth it. And like what I, what I heard too is that because of where we're located, we actually might be a good candidate for.
Well, we have the space, basically, is what they were saying.
I mean, I, I think it does not hurt to ask a question and to get some clarification. I do have some concerns about it. I am, I would love to see us be significantly more green than we are now, but. Yeah, roof gardens all over the place. But we're in this situation because what was installed was kind of one-off. And thirty years down the road, we've been paying for that really significantly and it did not pay off, which concerns me on this project. And I think that green and 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 lead building is really important. But I'm concerned we're too far into this one, although I think that for the roofs and for our future projects, absolutely go into it with that mindset. But I worry about the one-offs of it. I'm worried it's not, it's not good enough technology yet and we're gonna put in something that is gonna happen again. I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about that, but I also do not think that there is any harm in asking.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to hear that.
Asking the piece of it. And the third piece is we have to spend that six hundred thousand dollars by a certain date. Is that correct? Which is tied to this.
So we, we should be able, I mean, with the architect fees.
I was just gonna say.
The six hundred from the, from the Esser funds, reusing for this, that is, that has a timeline, whereas the other stuff.
Yeah, I don't think we need a whole nother proposal. I guess, yeah, it is more just.
Let's ask the question.
Yeah, like none, none of us are qualified to say that the technology is not good enough yet. We don't know that, we are not the architects. And we heard one, one quick comment about it. And so, so I guess, like I said, it's just more me express, like you said, Leah, moving forward with big building projects. This is a top priority that I feel like we can't ignore, we need to think about that.
I would add to your concern about, about putting in something that's gonna be problematic or obsolete in the short term. The way things are going with gas right now, I don't.
I, I don't disagree, I wanna, I'm putting solar on my own house, like I don't disagree one thousand percent.
I'm not talking about making it, I'm not talking about it being a choice either. The way things are going with gas right now, we might find ourselves ten years down the road where, where we have a forty-year lifespan on something that we only got ten years out of. And we're already going back for another bond.
Well, so let's see what they can give us in terms of further information about that option, kind of in the short order to see if we, you know, does it, is it going to impact how we move forward with the bid stage?
And I just want to point out, not to say that we're using this, part of this project too, and the point is that we are greener. Is it the greenest? You know, let's not put down this plan. This plan is something that's, they touted more efficiency or better efficiency of what we're doing now. Fifteen rooftops, the, the pool of energy, even from the electric energy of what we're doing now, we are improving. We are becoming greener. So yes, there's something else that we can ask a question about and get more information about. But that was touted, this is something that's new.
Yep, okay, Kim, is that fair to, okay? And can, and we can get that in between the two meetings, like something that, is that reasonable?
Update Kevin and maybe we send you a quick. We will send a quick update tomorrow even of what that's gonna look like.
Other board reports? Carlos, do you want to speak to Friday night?
I was gonna ask about that.
I was gonna say, I was gonna wait until everyone, if there were other board reports, I didn't want to stomp on it because I didn't necessarily prepare. But yeah, the international night the other night was fantastic. I was kind of blown away because it, it didn't feel like it was really overly advertised. I, I didn't hear a lot about it out and about. Of course, I was, I knew I was participating in it, so maybe I wasn't paying attention to it either, I don't know. But there were over, well over a hundred people that that showed up. And it was, it was a lot of fun. I think it might have been a little bit overwhelming for the organizers because they were, I don't know that they thought there were gonna be that many people there, but I don't know. It was, it was a really great time and I, and anyone who, who missed it, don't miss it next time.
Yeah, we missed it for the first time this year, so I'm glad it was really successful and fun, as always. That's great. Excellent, okay, future meetings and events. On April thirteenth is the Westmont Junior High School Fifth Grade Step Up Night at six thirty PM. On April fourteenth, we have the Blue Ribbon CUSD two oh one Celebration at Westmont High School at six thirty. April fifteenth and eighteenth are non-attendance days. And then we have the Spring Concert, Manning Spring Concert on April twenty-first at six thirty PM at Westmont High School. And our next school board meeting is April twenty-sixth at six PM. We do not need a second closed session, so the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, meeting adjourned.